You guys all ready? Left side, ready? Steve, you ready? You guys ready over here? All right, I would like to call the Monday, May 2nd, 2022. School Committee Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Kennedy, will you call the roll, please? I am here.
Here, Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Ms. Spaulding.
Here.
Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
All present.
All right, can we rise for the pleasure of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I will now turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see a full house. It's rare for us. Can I see hands for people who are here for public comment? Just the one? Okay, I need to read a statement and then I'll call you up.
Okay.
All right. The school committee invites members of the public to offer public comment, a welcome and important part of our work. Speakers are allowed up to two minutes for comments. Comments longer than two minutes may be submitted to the district office in writing for inclusion into the minutes of the meeting. We expect and encourage civility. Any remarks that are defamatory or abusive are always considered out of order, and the chairperson may terminate an individual's privilege of address on that basis. We ask all speakers to respect the following guidelines. Speakers may offer objective criticism of and/or ideas for school operations and programs on the agenda. Please refrain from complaints about specific school personnel or members of the school community. Finally, we request that no student names or any identifying information be offered, as that would violate the student's right to privacy. Thank you. Okay, you can come on up. So you do need to start by stating your name and address for the minutes.
Okay, can you hear me? My name is Carrie Glenn, 10 Salem Street, Newburyport, and thank you for letting me do this. There is a lot of information being released in our state on DEI, SEL, cultural competency, and comprehensive sex ed that has a lot of parents confused. What exactly are these programs and how do they translate into the curriculum, classroom, and our library books? Many parents in our district have tried multiple times to obtain lesson plans only to receive basic outlines that provide very little information, which leaves the parents feeling like they do not have access to what their children are learning in the schools. And we have a right as parents and taxpayers to know exactly what is being taught to our children. We are requesting full transparency from the district on exactly what the state and DC are requiring our district to implement in K through 12. How will these programs be implemented and where in the curriculum will they be implemented? We are requesting access to all lesson plans and a resource page on the district website dedicated solely to DEI, SEL, cultural competency, and comprehensive sex ed to learn the specifics of what will be taught in every class K through 12. We also want to know how these programs translate into professional development for our teachers. As taxpayers, we have a right to review all materials, training videos, and everything else used in the professional development of our teachers. We are all aware that the Surgeon General declared a mental health emergency amongst our youth, which has parents and schools very concerned. So this is a crucial time for schools and parents to work collaboratively, to educate our children on academics, and support them in the school environment. Parents need to know what their children are learning so that they can support them and their mental health in the context of their family values. We are requesting that the district have an open forum and address all of our questions so that we can work collaboratively in the best interest of our children and their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone earlier, any other public comment this evening? Okay, then moving on, seeing none, we have consent agenda. Are there any warrants, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, we have one warrant. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $203,871.2 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent, time for student recognitions.
I'm going to go up to the podium there and make it official. As long as you have to do it, enjoy your accolades.
Is it, um, is it, can I ask if it's okay for the paparazzi to line up to take pictures here?
I assume so.
Good.
Superintendent?
So, yeah, so for our parents, what we'll do is, first of all, thank you all for coming on and supporting these great kids of ours. We'll go through the awards and after we read the names, we'll have the students over here with the mayor and our vice chair, and the parents more than welcome to come up and take pictures. We'll take a two- to three-minute recess to recognize our students, so this is, uh, this is wonderful. So first of all, our student recognitions, we're recognizing eight Newburyport Youth Council members to be recognized for their leadership, hard work, and participation in the community conversations that was held on April 14th here at the Senior Center. These students presented the asset awards, asset awards, Asset Builder, which is Attitudes and Behavior Survey, as well as they participated in the community discussion and really focused on the effects of the pandemic on the youth and how we can support them moving forward. And I just want to say, it was not only just a data presentation. I just really want to commend the students for sharing their personal stories, insights for every single table. It was really motivating. And I just want to thank you as superintendent on behalf of the Newburyport Public Schools for that, that work and your great leadership, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you guys in the future, more school committee meetings. So I'm not sure if school committee is all you wanted to say a couple things also.
May I?
Sure.
Yes, I wanted to, I'm singling out you, James Moore, because James was at my table with district leadership and city council members, and he more than held his own in a thoughtful discussion, so I just want to thank you personally.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time.
Take a pause.
Oh.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Oh.
We're ready. Anyone else have any comments?
Only that I would second Vice Chair Hall. I thought you guys did a great job and, um, you're also fantastic. You guys can do their notes. That's a better team. You guys are great. I'm totally impressed.
Well, obviously, my student gets the, yeah, was the best. I'm superintendent of schools, so you get the best award.
Competitive, competitive.
No. So here we go. So we have a nice certificate for all their hard work and recognition. And just once again, thank you all very much, not only for working and breaking down the survey, but also I think those at the tables and your personal stories were really powerful for everybody. So first, we have Eve Bennett. Come on up. Congratulations. We need to stand right over here. James Moore. Next, we have Quinn Morrissey. All right, Kaylee, this is going to be Kaylee Sobolowskis. How'd I do?
All right, decent.
All right, thanks. Kaylee should come to my office last year and ask me why she has to be in class. Especially when the Bruins are in the playoffs. Our next student, Bethany Bentley, come on up. Evan Dutcher, come on up. I don't know. Isabel Weiss, come on up. All right, we'll take a photo up, the mayor and our vice chair, and parents, come on up if you want to take some pictures.
All right, so let's try to get in a little tighter.
I'll take some for this committee. I gotta get my phone.
Sheila said she takes the photos for us.
Awesome.
Do we need to swish in a little bit?
Yeah, I think we do. It's like turning the side with a stick. Perfect.
How's that? You fit everyone in?
Yep.
You got everybody?
Say gee.
Awesome. Congratulations. All right. Congratulations, everybody. Awesome.
Yes, this is, yeah, I think we'll start up again in a minute or two.
Congratulations, Alex, over there. Thank you, Alex. You're very welcome. You brought the good work. I'm gonna get you on the list. Right, awesome job. Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
Yes. She made some great points. Yeah. Bruins, playoffs, playoffs. You're very welcome. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, next up is the district cultural competency work and SEL overview.
Awesome. All right, right back up. All right, thank you very much. So I believe, um, we're going to give a kind of a overview and a sky view on some of the work that we're doing, but we do have through Vice Chair Hall a scheduled forum, and we're going to kind of look what that's going to look like, where we'll have a lot of our speakers coming up to answer specific questions, very similar to Mr. Callahan, the forum you held regarding COVID-19 back in the fall, where there's a lot of questions with masking and not masking for parents. We felt that was really helpful. All right. If everything works, that's a step in the right direction. So, um, there are little guys and girls right there, you know, Newburyport Public Schools. So this is really an overview of kind of the work that we're doing, but we kind of want to start, I think, really taking a look at a legal background and for all those that have been part of public education, I think the majority of us have been through public education. But really, the law requires that every child needs to attend schools. So this really sets the stage of the cultural work that we've been doing. I think for many years even before, it was called cultural work. So by law, um, throughout the history of this great country, you know, we've worked to live up to those ideals that everyone is created equally. And as you look at the law and what governs public education, well, also the workforce, because everything does tie to college and career readiness, you know, race, color, sexual orientation, religion, ethnicity, gender identity, homelessness, age, disability, and any other class and characteristics is protected by the law. And that's governed by federal law, and that's really kind of the work from, that transpired from the 1964 Civil Rights Act. So as we go look for that Title VI of civil rights, it's a primary educational law that protects people from discrimination based on race, national origin, color, and educational programs or activities. So that's been in place for over 50 years. So that's why when we talk about the work that we're doing here, Newburyport Public Schools, it really hasn't changed and tied back to the federal law and protection. As we go move forward, as you all know, so that's kind of at the federal level, the bigger overview of what rights and protections of all students and staff and pretty much all of us under the federal law. But the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also oversees the local compliance with education requirements and through a coordinated program review. So for our viewers, you can always log on to the DESA, look under equity, inclusion practices, and you'll see a bunch of information and toolkits. But really, we are required to be in compliance with a lot of those federal mandates. So under that coordinated program review, it covers special education, really, students with disabilities. It also covers civil rights and other general education requirements. And then also covers our English learners and our newcomers to Newburyport. And as we all know, we've had some, more newcomers coming in from Newburyport, and we anticipate with the war that's going on in Ukraine, we'll also be seeing some Ukrainian refugees probably within the next year or two. So just for a couple pieces here, under the civil rights and other general education requirements, there's two areas, and there's multiple areas, but this is just two I just wanted to highlight. For this CR24, it's really the district ensures that individual teachers in the district review of all education materials for simplistic, demeaning generalizations, lack of intellectual merit based on race, color, gender, identity, religion. So really, this is just a curriculum review that is always ongoing and for us to continue to look at what we're teaching and making sure that it does not, you know, offend or, you know, stereotype people within the materials that we're teaching. The second piece is the CR25, and remember, this is really looking at all programming from pre-K to 12, and it's just really equitable access for all students under not only the state law, but also the federal law. So here is just some DESC recommended tools. I did mention, there's a lot of them. But as you all recall, as part of education evaluation overhaul in 2012, there was what was known as SMART goals. So for every teacher, administrator, superintendent, you would develop a SMART goal, either student learning goal or a professional practice goal, and in many cases, either school improvement goal or district improvement goal. So that was really pushing schools to really have measurable goals every year focused on student learning outcomes. Around 2016 and 17, also what was part of the Massachusetts Education Evaluation is a SMARTY goal, which also has inclusive practices and then equity within the classroom, your programming, and then all of our, you know, everything that we have to make sure it's equitable for all students to access. So part of that is under CR25, as you're evaluating your programming under the, for equity, there's Equity Walks, which is a toolkit that you can work with your administration, your teachers, to really like look at all the aspects of the student's day. So I just pulled out one sample of the checklist. So a sample Equity Walk rubric checklist. This is assist districts and part of our audits that we have through the state, through our program coordinated review. They will look at a lot of these different areas. I kind of wanted to highlight, I just talked about CR24 and CR25. So here are a couple highlighted areas that address those. So if you look under relationships, respect, and connections, the state's really looking for teachers under eight. Teacher has a clear, consistent, and equitable consequence of treatment of behaviors, and that's really your SEI work that we're going to talk about in a minute. And then under that one on 11, teacher uses culturally appropriate language encourages students to do so as well. So really how students talk to one another. On the right side is the classroom physical environment. So teacher displays diverse cultural materials, photos, words, art, et cetera, that represents cultural diversity. And it's really the high-quality work is displayed, which really ties to number eight, that today, students feel like they belong in the classroom and that the classroom belongs to them. So by displaying student work and student success and student art in the classroom, it just really gives the students a sense of belonging of the learning that they have. The other piece is number six, and this is just, once again, a couple samples. I mean, when you look at the equity checklist, there's other areas that they look at, but students are grouped in multiple ways to access each other's student strengths. And that's a great piece of education when we talk about the new strategic plan and all the focus groups and the input that we got from our community. Collaboration is a real need for us to make sure our students do that in a positive way before they graduate. This is one area that also assists us with our checks and balances. So the other piece is social-emotional learning core competency. So this is another tool from the state, and so basically, this is social-emotional learning right here. Students have self-awareness, they have responsible decision-making, they're developing relationship skills within the classroom and with their peers. They're socially aware of different settings and how they behave, and then just self-management. You know, how to behave in those different settings. And if you look on the left, Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Programs is our PBIS programming, which is a pre-K all the way to grade eight. And basically, what we do with that is we take the social-emotional learning pillars that is provided by the state, and we utilize every social interaction as a learning tool. And I know when I go out and I visit all the different schools, I got to eat snack time with preschool. So you would think snack time, hey, break, and the kids run around. It's not like that. It's very structured with snack time, where students are sitting and at a table at grades, you know, three and four years old, and actually eating their snack and having conversation. And there's water on the table, they pour each other water, and it's just really taking every social interaction and utilizing that as a learning experience. And when we look at the focus groups, the soft skills that companies are looking for, like to be successful, if you look at the top 10 skills that businesses are looking for, it's those soft skills. It's collaboration, it's respect, it's problem-solving, critical thinking, understanding who you're working with. So we start that in preschool, and that goes all the way up to grade 12. Obviously, it looks a little bit different, you know, middle school. Obviously, it looks a little bit different, you know, middle school and high school. I wish, you know, my daughters would go back to preschool and would pass me, you know, the milk and stuff, but. So when you see that PBIS, it's really, and there's the NARC advantage, and every school has different aspects of that, but it's really treating people with respect, kindness, and, you know, having the ability to work with people. At the high school, it looks a little bit different. That's your advisory program. So there's a lot of college and career readiness that goes into the advisory, but there's also some time for students to get together and to have constructive dialogue about various The next piece that the state also provides is really professional development for teachers. So there's the technical work, which includes the skills, the learning, the language, the Equity Walks, some of those things that I just talked about. And then there's the adaptive work, which is really just a self-reflection on your teach and practice, hopefully on a daily basis, yearly basis, and looking at different ways of reaching students. So that's the work that's being provided and the tools being provided by the state. And this is the work that we've been taking on as a district. So that's the adaptive work that we just talked about, really the self-reflection on how you can teach better and reach more students. So this where everyone is welcome. So I just quickly walk through, I don't want to make this a four-hour presentation because I know we're going to have a forum as we talk a little bit more in depth. But really, what I just walked through is quickly walk through the federal law, basically is everyone has a right for an education and everyone needs to come to school. The second piece I just talked about is everyone needs to be protected by the law. And then the third piece I just talked about was the DESE. So our state and the DESE make sure that those practices are in place. So there's three pillars. One, everyone has to come to school, federal law. Two, everyone's protected under that law. And three, these practices need to be in place to keep everyone feeling pretty good. So Newburyport, this is what, this is all the work that we're doing. Number one thing is when a student comes into Newburyport Public Schools at eight in the morning and they leave at 2:30, can we answer that question, that I belong here? For every staff member that comes into our schools from eight in the morning to 2:30 and goes home, do they belong here? Do they have a sense of belonging and part of our community? So this is one, not only a Sean Gallagher vision, but it's an MPS vision that's loaded through the former strategic plan. This is also with the new strategic plan, a core value of this community. And this is the work that we've been doing over the past four years since I've been here. So just to remind everybody, the mission statement that was developed prior me with this community is right here. So if you just, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but it's really looking at what I just talked about, PBIS, you know, what is this social emotional learning? Well, it's practice kindness and perseverance. It's to celebrate every unique individual in this school. It's to value creativity, experimental, and rigorous educational opportunities, provide a nurturing environment for emotional and social and physical growth, and this is very important, is to understand and embrace their role as global citizens. I think that's an extremely important aspect. So this was the old strategic plan and values and mission. So one of the things that we did for our new strategic plan is we went out and we worked in the middle of a pandemic, wearing masks, to gather as much input as we could from our community and stakeholders, students, parents, community members, city councils, school committee, where we asked a lot of questions. And really, the ultimate question is what are the skill sets, knowledge, skill sets, and mindset that these graduates are going to need to be successful in college or the workforce? And these were the top areas that really came back. So it was over 750 people participated, the most ever participating in a strategic plan and focus group, and it took us about seven months to meet with a lot of different people. And then we also sent out some surveys where people could fill out surveys. So really, it's the physical, emotional well-being of our students, it's literate, being literate across all disciplines or many disciplines, a creative, innovative, collaborative problem solver, civically engaged, and then preparation for life after graduation. So that's the work that has been going on with our new vision and the new strategic planning. So building a welcoming school community obviously has many aspects. I think the first piece is the educated professional development. The second piece is to really focus in school culture development, and that's just not the teachers, the administrators, superintendent, school committee. The number one aspect of that is the students themselves. Program policy development and review and the constant evaluation of our programming. And then really, this student program that I just mentioned. You know, the last four years, we really elevated our student leadership throughout the district where we're bringing students to the table, together their input and their insight on various topics. So I think the one piece is the cultural competency work in Newburyport. I can talk about Newburyport specifically. This is it. This is the cultural competency framework. So really, you look at these five areas. So awareness is really what dynamics am I conscious of in this situation? So whatever situation you're dealing with, from a classroom situation to a conversation to a colleague situation, professional development, what am I aware of? Attitude, how do I feel and what beliefs or values impact what I say? So what am I bringing to the table? My own personal values, my own personal beliefs, and then what do I say? The third aspect of this is knowledge. What facts do I know and what procedures do I know and understand? And then the skills, how am I translating my knowledge into skills that would be helpful? And then last is practices, how can I enhance educational practice and what am I committed to do? So we can go through multiple scenarios, but really, this is just for our professionals and for all of us, just kind of taking all situations, really taking a step back and self-reflecting on the situation. So I'll give you a common situation that could happen for us. So this is a situation where a student's withdrawing from a class for various reasons. So I'm a teacher here, and I'm aware, what dynamics am I conscious of? I noticed the student is not connecting with the lesson or with other students. Okay. So I look at myself, how do I feel? What are my beliefs and values I impact? Well, when I grew up, I worked hard. My parents worked hard, I paid attention. So if I take my value to this scenario, I look at the student that's withdrawing and I say, oh, they're lazy. You know, they have the access to everything, they're just lazy, they just don't want to work hard. But if I self-reflect on that, and those are the values I'm bringing to the table, well, I'm not really having open eyes on this one. So what's the knowledge? What facts do I know? What procedures or what I need to know to understand what's happening? Well, one of the facts could be, and we'll just use this, a student is from a different culture. So I know, and I use this, my differentiation or my professional development and my teach and practice. So basically, if I know that, then I could go back and really dig a little bit deeper. You know, maybe it's not, you know, this one has culture, but maybe it's not even culture. Maybe this student isn't connecting to the lesson because both their parents are working at night, and maybe this student is taking care of his siblings. And so when they come into the classroom, it has nothing to do with laziness, it has nothing to do with them wanting to engage, it has to do with a situation at home. So this is when we say, what facts do I know? And if I only have a few facts on this situation, I might need to dig deeper. If it's a culture piece, maybe the student's not understanding what's happening in that classroom. Maybe I'm covering the material too fast. Maybe there's not support for that student. So this is really a self-reflection and really a pattern that is very helpful in all situations for all of us. So the second piece here is the skills. How am I translating my knowledge into the skill would help the student? I can provide experiences for the students to get to know themselves or know each other. So those are just different ways I can help that student engage with the class instead of withdrawing. And then the last piece, how do I enhance my educational practice and what am I committed to? Well, this, if this teacher could attend conferences, workshops, learn more from the student's family or community, really just digging deeper. So what cultural competency framework does for us, it has us take a step back and just self-reflect on the situation, not on the, you know, different, you know, whatever the situation is bringing us, different facts, and then just to dig a little bit deeper. And we've been utilizing this cultural competency with our administrators, with our teachers, just really to take a step back and reflect. If you're having, you know, as an administrator, we could have a disagreement, you know, with a parent, for example, and I could follow this, this aspect, follow the, you know, what am I aware of, what attitude am I bringing, what are the beliefs I'm bringing? I'm a parent, I parented my child this way, this parent's parenting their child that way, but I bring that to the conversation, and I have to know my own values or beliefs on parenting. It may not be the same as the person I'm talking to on the phone. What knowledge? Are there more facts to the story that I don't have? And what are the skills? What am I missing? What skill development can I do so if there are issues, we can fix them? And then in the practice, are there more things that I need to understand? So really, overall, that's an overview of the work we've been doing on cultural competency, just really taking a step back. And I've actually used this with arguments with my daughters, and I get to knowledge and then they stop listening to me. I'm just kidding, I love my daughters. The next area that also assists with us, so we have the cultural competency work that really you take a step back and you, you bring, what are your values, what are your beliefs, what do you bring into the table? And then the essential partners is really the second piece. It's really having constructive dialogue, really developing structure of a dialogue when you may not agree with somebody, where you may have differences. But it really just focuses, basically what we say is, you're hard on the problem and soft on the people. So our essential partners is developing dialogue skills in the classroom. And basically, what we're trying to do, and what we've done, I think, very successfully, is a type of engagement where it's inclusive, where students learn to speak constructively across differences, ideas, and opposing views, providing a supportive space that encourages more student participation and dialogue. So we're working with all of our students, having the ability to converse and to be part of those conversations, even though the views may totally be different, but creating a safe place that they can have those discussions and not saying that if I have an opposing view with someone else, that I need to change my view, but I could have an opposing view and then go to lunch and be eating with my friends, even though we have opposite views. So it really just focuses on constructive dialogue. So what have we used this for? This is what we've actually used it for. We started working with essential partners my first year that I got here. So basically, students and staff have, if you all recall, well, some of you may not, solved the valedictorian conversations, where students and staff came together and worked through having two opposite views, finding common ground and problem solving. And they came up with a great plan. We've also used this for student shadow days. So a student shadow day is we reached out to our students, and we had teachers following students throughout the day. This was my second year, and really understanding what our students go through on a daily basis. And teachers shadowed the students, our students ran the dialogue on how our teachers could be more engaging in the classroom with student input. The other piece that we've done is we've developed classroom discussions. And obviously, we've all been to school, you're going to have discussions on science, history, ELA, but really having that constructive dialogue where students' views are heard and respected, even though in the classroom it could be opposing views. And then the last piece for our parents that went to the NARC and got to lead, be part of the student-led conferences, that was all part of that dialogue, where instead of the parent going to the teachers and asking how my son or daughter's doing, the students ran the dialogue on how they were doing with their parents. And it was, we received nothing but positive feedback on that, and that's something we want to continue to expand. The other piece that, of our collaborative partnerships over the years, many of our resources have supported creating policies and interventions to respond when students make mistakes. So that's a restorative justice approach, is that we understand that children and students are going to make mistakes. It's how do we provide the supports to bring them back into our community? So we've worked with parent-teacher-administrated, parent-teacher-administrative PLCs at the NARC, where we utilize that framework, cultural competency framework with parents at the different parent groups as we try to problem solve and find common ground in different areas. We've also, yes?
Can you say what PLC stands for?
Oh, that's Professional Learning Communities.
Okay.
Yeah, PLC is a professional learning community, yeah.
Thank you, a lot of acronyms.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's helpful, thank you.
PLC is a professional learning community where you're bringing, could bring teachers and colleagues together to work, also bringing parents and teachers together. Our essential partners, dialogue approaches to processing different difficult situations or opposing views. And then Newburyport Human Rights Commission, obviously, they've been so important for us when we've dealt with some various issues, and we collaborate with them to ensure transparency and collaboration. And then also, when we do have some scenarios, they've come in and they've worked with our students and staff. The Anti-Defamation League has offered student workshops on cyberbullying, bullying, and how to create a safe environment within the schools. And then we're utilizing a mobile-led public schools restorative lessons and interventions with students. So all of these pieces have come out of essential partners, and really, our students have really taken hold of that along with our faculty and support staff. And once again, the essential partner work is really having constructive dialogue where people with opposing views can come together, have a conversation, and still, as we say, tough on problems, soft on people. You know, and I think for all of us, well, I know growing up, you know, we had live examples of that happening all the time. You know, you had President Reagan and Tip O'Neill, two guys that opposite views came together, problem solved. And I even think, you know, I don't want to get into politics, but even, you know, Bill Clinton and Newt Gingrich came together, two opposite views. So this is the work we're doing in the class because, as we said, when we start looking at the portrait of a graduate, having dialogue, collaboration, and problem solving is essential. So we're working with our students to give them that sense. And I think the last piece, for me as superintendent, and, you know, we've been through a lot. We've been through a pandemic, a lot of change, you know, in society, I think, you know, this generation, it's one thing after another, you know, we're all dealing with the Ukrainian war right now and the impacts that's going to have on the world. But I always say, you have to be in this together. You have to be in this together. And that means for us, as a school system, we have to be in this, you know, for our kids. And I'm a visual learner, and I just, you know, I went to the Iftar Community Night last Thursday, and I sat right in the back, and there was probably about, I want to say about 120 people here, and it was really with our Muslim families and friends on Ramadan. And, you know, I'm not very familiar with the Muslim religion, I'm a, you know, Catholic. And I sat back, and I just sat back and And I sat back and I just sat back and we went through that experience, I learned a lot. And I just looked across the room and I saw everybody. The, the energy was so positive, someone actually mentioned that to me, this energy is so positive. And I saw across the room, we saw people from all different religions. You know, we had Catholic faith, Jewish faith, Protestant, I mean, we had people from all different backgrounds. Bruce Menon was playing with our Afghan students, he got to sit at the kids' table, and none of them spoke English.
He didn't have a choice, Sean.
Yeah, no choice. But I'm just saying, alright. So there's a whole language barrier, there's a whole culture barrier, there's all of that. But they were sitting at a table, playing games, those children were thrilled, happy, smiling. Mr. Menon was happy, smiling. And I think for me, when we say a sense of belonging, that's exactly what we want our Newburyport Public Schools to look like. Where people can come together from various backgrounds, various family upbringing, and then have an opportunity to, to be in a good place, to feel comfortable, and really to learn from one another. And I think, in, in my closing remark, I, I didn't really have a closing remark, but I just remember being in here and just being part of that. And I left driving home that night and I'm saying, and I just said to myself, I go, that's, this is what it's all about. We can have that type of a community where people are happy. Wasn't, you know, for, for our Afghan families who, who really, it wasn't all about, you know, the language and that type of communication. But I think humanity that night is what really, they left there happy, knowing that they had support. And it was awesome. So that's the broad view of kind of, you know, what we've been doing here in Newburyport. You know, from the cultural competency work, and that's the cultural competency framework, that's it. For the essential partners, working with our students. And when you have absolutely opposing views, how do you have a constructive dialogue around that? So you're still in the room, you talk about issues, and then you're out eating lunch together. And then all of our other community support that we've had over the years in supporting that sense of belonging, so. I didn't, I was just gonna talk at my chair, but I said, I better put some slides together because... So I'll post this on our website, but that's just kinda some talking points and kinda the big view from the federal government to the state and then to what our community is all about. And that's creating a sense of belonging for all of our kids and welcoming everybody regardless of their background, so. There you go. If you guys have any questions or...
Thank you, Superintendent.
Alright, thank you.
I was gonna ask if you could post that to the district website, so.
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
A lot of good information.
And I, and I think as, as Ms. Hall, as you said, I think this kinda gives a big overview. When we have our forum, we can get a little bit more specific on kinda what that looks like in the classroom, so.
Do we know the date for that, maybe?
Yep, we're going with June 6th, so that's our first Monday meeting. Thought it made sense to go with a time when I know we're all available and we have our venue here.
Same standard time?
At this point, I'm planning on 6:30, I'll be, we'll communicate clearly if that changes. But, you know, I think it's most practical to go with our usual time and place, so. Other, other questions or comments for the superintendent?
I would just say, like, going forward, and I think Lisa Marie's already kinda talked about this a little bit, but like that...
Looking at the PD for the year and, and how do we present that the best way to the public? You know, whether it's a timeline or just a thing on the website where you can click and it breaks down what essential partners is, or whatever we're doing throughout the year and a little description maybe, and how it fits in the, maybe it's like a timeline or something on the calendar. That probably would be something that'd be visual and helpful that someone could just like access and see, like where we're trying to go.
Anyone else? Thank you. Up next, we have the school calendar, once again. Hopefully, third time's the charm.
Flash Chair Hall?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve the calendar change as indicated in the agenda? So that the Thursday, December 22nd's a half day and the Friday is a day off for everybody, students and staff. That's my motion.
Second. Okay, discussion. Just...
Sorry, say that again.
The change as indicated by the ASPI contract, that they get the Friday before Christmas off. So that would change our things, that the Thursday, the 22nd's the half day, early release for students, and the full day off is that Friday, the 23rd, for everybody.
Yeah, so just for clarity, it's, they're contractual holidays in the custodian's contract that was in our packet. And anytime a contractual holiday falls on a Saturday, they would get Friday off since they don't work on the weekends. And Christmas Eve is a Saturday, so Friday has to be off. And this was an oversight when we were creating the calendar, so. Just going back and fixing it and...
We should write that down next time.
Yeah.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yes.
So we voted on calendars before and then there've been adjustments made by the superintendent. I'm just curious whether we have to vote on every change?
I think this one happens to be a big one, just 'cause it's...
Because it's not like an end of the year thing.
And it's union related too.
Okay.
I think, right, that would be the, other than, I don't know, switching an ER day or something, right?
Okay.
This may be a record, the number of times we voted on the calendar during the year.
It really doesn't, that's not usual, you know, we don't typically do that.
And it's been amicable, so it's... So yeah, the only other change impact, as Mr. Callahan said, is now the last day of school is, the planned last day is June 14th instead of June 13th, just bumping that day to the end. So that's it, that's, that's the extent of the changes. Were there any other questions or comments about it? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see, we have, I'm not sure, let's see, Mr. Callahan, any subcommittee finance updates since last week?
Nope, we have not met, we meet on the 12th.
Okay. And policy, I know we got an update from you last week, anything?
There is no update, we meet on the 11th.
Great, okay.
So, next Monday.
And Mr. Menon for joint ed?
Sure, we have to meet tomorrow, but at our last meeting, superintendent was there and responded to a number of questions, clarifications asked for by the city council about our budget and other things.
Okay. That was quick. Ms. Hippolito, are you out there? There you are, come on up to our podium.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about our April Math Academy that occurred during April vacation. It was part two of two in our accelerated math grant that we received from the Department of Education. Happy to say that we had 67 students who participated in the April Math Academy. I want to give some thanks to Ally Burns, who's our math coach at the Brezner Hand School, who co-led the week with me as part of her PAL task. It was great to see her in action, taking action steps towards her own teacher leadership and administration. And also Chris Apisios, who helped guide the programming for our English language learners during the week. It was a fabulous week of math. The third graders were working on geometry skills. And our fourth and fifth graders were working on fractions. And then grades six through nine were working on various skills from equalities to statistics to... One more, one more. It's escaped me, so sorry. But another standard, and where we grow those standards from was from looking at the data of where we have historically struggled in the past through some of our district testing. So we're interested to see, there was pre and post-testing done for both camps, the February and the April. And we did see growth from all students, obviously various growth from different students, but we did see growth and we hope that that was the little bump that they needed to support them within their regular classrooms. We also had our STEM program running during the week as well as performing arts with Ms. Mrs. Phillips. So that was wonderful. Let's see what else. A special bonus for the students who attended both weeks with perfect attendance, partnering with Tom Zorian from the Department of Education as well as Empower Learning, they will be receiving a $25 gift card to Target. So we're excited to give them that little, that little surprise. We also wanna thank Kathy Becker, who was our school nurse for all three days. And to the 11 teachers, three instructional assistants, and the many parents who supported us, we just say thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Menon?
How many, how many participated, is there growth between the February and the April in terms of the numbers of students, or is it basically the same?
In February, we had about six more students than we had in April, which is to be expected. The weather is nicer and such, but yes. At first, we were a little concerned 'cause the, I think, Mr. Cole and I had talked about this a little bit in the parking lot, that we had like a little slow roll of the registration for April, but then it did manage to pick up, so. And now we're on to our summer offerings, which we're really excited about as well.
Would you be able to say roughly what percentage of students in April were returning from the February camp?
I would say about 85%.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
We got a lot of feedback from parents whose students participated, saying, oh, this was great, my child came home and they actually liked math for three days and, you know, so we really just tried to, you know, give feedback as well to that the way that we were doing the math was not like this rote math. We were trying to do like a lot of hands-on activities as well as bringing reading and literacy into math. And of course, you know, as much hands-on STEM activities as well, so, it was a great week.
Yes. Can you just explain again why, why, you mentioned STEM and performing arts, were they part of the...
The day that was rolled into the Math Academy, they also had the hands-on learning for STEM and then there were some performing arts components too?
So a requirement of the grant was four hours of math a day. So just like thinking about that and, you know, I used to be a math coordinator, I'm thinking, four hours of math, like how is that, what is that gonna look like? And so just trying to be creative of looking at math in various ways. So we use STEM and the performing arts as kind of like a specialist during the day, but also another way for students to see math besides this, like, rote learning, basically. Yeah, so it was, it was great. And the math, the performing arts that was done had a math theme to it. So it wasn't just like regular music class, for example, it had some math themes to it, so it was great.
Mr. Cole?
Thank you. I just wanna take a moment to just recognize you for your leadership, but all the teachers that helped and especially the families, the children, students, and their parents for really supporting this and student attendance at it, because I'm just so impressed that so many kids took advantage of this opportunity to have a platform of achievement, if you will, in mathematics. And I really think it's gonna be a great thing for them to, especially as you've noted, the growth. It's just an outstanding thing to offer and honestly, when I, when my kids were in school, I wish we had, you know, vacation programs like this, so I wouldn't have to spend so much time chasing around the kitchen on roller blades, but, but, but no, this...
They were on roller blades, you weren't.
Yeah, yeah, who's roller blades?
They were, they were, they were, that's why they were easy to catch, you know? But, no, I think it's just outstanding, so I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. And I'm excited to say we rolled out our summer enrollment for our EL STEM camp as well as our Summer Lit Camp, and the enrollment is like skyrocketing within just two days. So we're, we're really excited to offer these opportunities to our students and their families, so, thank you.
Flash Chair? Well, just to follow up, it would be great to see the metrics that you mentioned, just to, if you could share, you don't have to present it, but if you could share it with the school committee at a future meeting, it'd be great to see that.
That's great, Ms. Walker, because the part that I'm not talking about is the extended report I now have to do for the state of Massachusetts around our Math Academy, so I left that part, that's no fun, I left that part out.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that I'm also very encouraged, not only during, about the vacation camps, but about what we're beginning to do in the summer. For, for many years, we've talked about providing all kinds of activities for kids during the summer that support academics or allow them to move forward in academics. So I'm really glad to hear that we're doing that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Menon.
You mentioned the summer program, could you give us just a little preview of coming attractions? What those programs are gonna look like in terms of how long they run, how many students you can accommodate?
Sure, okay, so let's see, I'm gonna organize this all in my head, 'cause there's a lot we're offering this summer in partnership with the superintendent, of course.
Just a quick overview, 'cause it's exciting.
Sure, yes, we're very excited. So we have the Summer Lit Literature Camp, they call it Summer Lit Camp, that has been historically here in Newburyport. And that camp, as well as the EL STEM Camp, will both run July 11th through August 4th from 8:30 to 11:30 in the morning. And we've also partnered with our neighbor's table, who will be there for a kind of farmer's market every Wednesday, so anyone can come by and like go through. The number of students, it's open, the Lit Camp, we first start with students who we consider could use their teacher recommendations as well as our Title I department recommendations to see that there isn't that summer slide we often talk about. And making it, just like we did for the math, making it a fun time around literacy. And the number of students really depends on how many students reply to our initial invitation and the number of teachers able to attend. The Summer EL STEM Camp, that is a co-taught camp with an English language teacher and a general education teacher, and that is from grades one through nine. And basically, the day is a way to encourage critical thinking skills and a higher level vocabulary for English language learners and kinda moving away from just like that general instruction of this is how you speak English. We also have many, I formed a partnership with Triton and Penn Tuckett. We're calling ourselves Oceanside Professional Development. And we're offering PD among the three districts for all of our staff. And so anyone can sign up for those various programs. We're still in the working stages, but right now, we have, I believe it's nine different professional development opportunities among the three districts. Then, we're also working on an advanced academy, and this is actually the brainchild of our superintendent, where we are having staff sign up to work with students, grades seven through 12, on just high-level activities they wouldn't typically get during the school year. So those are just a couple, a couple of things going on this summer.
Just a couple?
Just a couple.
No school vacation for you, huh?
Doesn't sound like it, but it's good, it's all good stuff.
Alright, thank you. Were there any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all, thank you.
Alright, Superintendent, it's your turn.
Um, let's see. First, I just wanted to thank Ms. Hippolito and as Mr. Cole said, all of our teachers that put together that April Math Academy. And I think we're kinda just taking that same idea into the summer. So that Advanced Academy is a, we're trying to pilot this, we're reaching out to our teachers. It just really, we're calling it Advanced Academy, but it's just for the students that wanna continue learning throughout the summer, giving all students an opportunity. And then also what we really like about this idea too is, if you're a science teacher, a math teacher, they could come up with a course that is something maybe outside of what they have the ability to do. So for example, biology teacher might come up with a marine biology course for the summer. So for the students that are interested in science, this might be something that they wanna attend. A math teacher could do, you know, the, the art of mathematics, where you incorporate art and geometry and things like that. So we're kinda waiting for some of our teachers to kinda give us a write-up of an elective that they may be interested in teaching, and it's just really focused on students that, you know, really wanna continue education throughout the summer. And we're kinda modeling it after a, like a summer course for college, you know, those week-long courses that you can take in, in, you know, at Salem State or Endicott. Just really modeling that idea for the high school students and middle school students that wanna continue, so. And then we're also trying to tie in the place-based education piece to that too.
I just had a quick question, this is a great idea. I was wondering if you're gonna be doing mixed age groupings, or will it be by grade?
Oh, that's a great question, I think it's, depends... Oh, that's a great question. I think it's, depends on, I think, once we have the courses and we put it out there, if we have, I know at the high school, it may be mixed grade levels, but maybe even at the... I think it's really to the interest in, you know, students that want to just continue their education and really explore different content areas in a different way.
Because there probably are gifted, I know of a few gifted middle school students who are capable of taking a class with a high school student, so.
Correct, and it's, and it's not necessary, we're looking at like a, more, for the grading is more of like a project-based capstone project at the end. So we're, we put it out there, I know we've had three or four teachers that are very interested in, we would like to hopefully, you know, kind of model it after the success of the math academies that Ms. Ipolito ran, so. Because there is an interest there for students and parents, you know, to continue. And we felt for the older students, a week-long course may not be, it's not like summer school, it's six weeks. It's a very specific course that they can take, so we'll see. We're excited about that, so. All right. Superintendent's report, I just, we did send out a notification in the hiring of Catherine Parsons, our new assistant principal at the NOC Middle School. As I said, she's an experienced educational leader. Since 2016, she's been a member of the Whittier Vocational Technical School Team. Her roles as a teacher, teacher coach, team chair, learning loss coordinator. She's created teacher mentoring programs, and has developed data-focused curricula, inspired students at all levels. The other piece that was, but she also brings to the table is her understanding of the college and career readiness piece. Being at Whittier Tech, it's really geared to the vocational and careers, and so that was really exciting for us. She's also very energetic, she experienced educator, has advanced degrees in curriculum and instruction. She's certified in administration, special education, and English. And throughout her career, she's been a tireless advocate for strong student-focused public education. Catherine's completed her master's degree in curriculum and instruction at UMass at Lowell, and her bachelor's at UMass EMR. So we're really excited to have her join our team. Just a update on COVID, as you can see, the case is, I think, very similar to what's happening around the state. You know, they are going up, not at alarming rates, but this, last week, we had 22 students were positive and eight staff. The vaccination rates are encouraging, so the Brezenhand is now at 86%, the Mullen 72%, NOC is at 78%, and the high school is at 85%. So we continue to meet on Wednesdays, myself and Ms. McDonald, and just to continue to monitor that. The other exciting news is, yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but I did have a quick... Yeah, thank you. So I noticed you said that the Mullen rate was significantly lower than the Brezenhand rate, is that correct?
It's 72%, correct.
Compared to the Brezenhand, which is up over 86%?
86%.
Any, that seems curious to me that the older students would be less, do you have any, any reason for that?
No, I know we are still encouraging, you know, Ms. McDonald's still encouraging students to continue with the vaccination rates. And I know we're still encouraging, even the adults are, you know, the second vaccination for the people at 50 and older, so.
Yeah, it seems like, just struck me as kind of weird for the fourth graders to be...
I mean, I could find, I could find out if we have any info.
Yeah, there might not be an explanation, it's just interesting.
Yeah. But I'll find out, maybe there is something that, I know we are encouraging, we are still encouraging.
No, I'm sure you are, yep. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Also, some good news here is, if you recall before, I think my first year, we talked about Educatius, that international program, exchange program. So obviously with COVID, it kind of took a hiatus, but we've been really working with them. And so we're up to, I think, 12 students that have committed to next year, so from all across the world. We have students from Spain, Austria, Brazil, Italy, Chile, Venezuela, France, Germany, that have committed. So Mr. Wolf is working with Educatius and presenting, we were one of three high schools, I think in the nation, that presented in Newburyport. So I think his work behind the scenes is paying off. If you recall, the funding that goes, that comes into the schools from the exchange program in Educatius goes to the school choice program. So that's just another way of us trying to generate more revenue. But you know what, it also ties into working, bringing in students from diverse backgrounds, from different countries, is also great for all of our kids and teachers. Our school choice, so as you recall, we have nine slots still remaining in grade one, 10 slots remaining in grade two, seven slots remaining in grade six, six slots remaining in grade seven, no slots in grade eight, those are filled. Grade nine, we have two slots open, we opened up with 15, we're at 13. Grade 10, we have one slot, and grade 11, we're full. So, you know, that's good news, people want to come to Newburyport.
So I think we came up with those numbers before, did you already have an idea of the Educatius program, like how many kids were coming in and...
Yeah, I think when we incorporated this, this was, we were incorporating these numbers into that. And most of these students are grade 12. And then last but not least, walking Wednesdays are starting, so I'll be participating, I think, with many of you. May 4th is the walk to school day. My ankle's a little sore, Mr. Callahan said he'd have a scooter there just in case I don't make it.
A hog?
Yeah.
You want to draw that?
So, it's an awesome day, I think it's, you know, when we all meet and the kids are so excited, so.
Do we move those if it's bad weather? Do we shift it over?
If it's raining, I think they have, yes.
Yeah, it's like the next day.
The next day, yeah. So that's, I think that's all I have for my superintendent's report, so. Thank you all, you're welcome.
Just so you know, it's called walking and, walking and rolling Wednesdays, get it?
Walking, oh.
Walk and roll, uh-huh.
I like that.
That's international, that's national.
Took me a minute, thank you.
All right.
That's national, I don't know if we call it that in Newburyport, but it's, it's national.
I was reading the Cliff Notes, I guess. They left out the rolling piece.
Excellent. Okay, any new business?
Madam Vice Chair, just a comment that our Transportation Committee, Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet next Tuesday, and I believe we are gonna, planning to meet at 4:00, and we'll post that, we'll make sure we post the meeting. But it'll be, it'll be at the, at the main office, central office.
Okay, great.
And the only thing, yes, the only thing I have is, if you recall, I think before the pandemic, we did a, I think a nice honor for Ms. Grabowski, the bus driver. It was like two and a half years ago. So we're working on potentially having a bench placed out right by the NOC, where the buses leave the NOC. So I think that was something that we talked about in school committee previously, so we're having those conversations again, and hopefully we can do something for the Grabowski family. They meant so much to the Mullen and the NOC students, you know, for 27 years, so. She was, so we want to kind of bring that back and see what we can do.
Hey, anyone else? I did want to mention the possibility that we will cancel our June 21st meeting. If you recall, it was moved originally scheduled on June 20th, that turned out to be a federal holiday, Juneteenth observed, so we moved it to the 21st. Since learned that City Council scheduled their special meeting to vote on the budget. It's a very important meeting, many of us may want to attend. So rather than try to pull a double header, thinking it would make sense to cancel it, I'll announce that officially at the next meeting, just giving everyone a heads up. If you have agenda items, things that need to be wrapped up by the end of the year, we will hopefully be able to wrap up on, on June 6th. And we should have a good idea of whether that is a reasonable goal at the next meeting, we can announce it officially, so, just a heads up. Was there anything else for new business? All right, then, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.